And we're honored to have moderating, former Santa Monica mayor, Michael Feinstein, who has been remarkable representative and passed on council. And we are grateful to his help too on putting on this forum. So without further ado, I want to give you Michael Feinstein.
Just want to make a brief comment. We heard from our earlier speakers about some very specific things that they were hoping for. I just also want to mention that while we're dealing with the specific airport in a specific area, there are so many issues that interconnect on so many levels tonight of land use, transportation, aviation, environment, public safety, public health. Who has jurisdiction in a kind of area like this? We're testing a lot of the waters in terms of really what is the state of law in a situation like this? Who has the ability to regulate? What kind of forms of cooperation between local government, regional government, state, national on an issue like this? And finally, even we may see after November, how does the change in presidential administration affect how those questions are answered? We've given questions to our candidates in part because of the belief that if they're going to serve on the city council, they get a staff report for a meeting. It's not a catch-and sort of thing, but we want them to have the questions and to be able to think about it and give a kind of informed answer. We're going to start out with 90 seconds for the first question. And the first question is, if you are elected or re-elected to city council, will you commit to making air pollution at Santa Monica Airport a priority issue? And proactively and aggressively work towards finding a solution that protects the Santa Monica and Los Angeles residents' health and well-being? If so, what short and long-term strategies would you pursue?
Good evening. I'm Michael Kovak. It's an honor to be here. I want to thank Crap for having me. As a Sunset Park resident, this is an issue that's very near and dear to my heart. I'm right in the flight path along Ocean Park until, as we talked about the safety issues, we talked about the air pollution issues, it's something that I'm quite familiar with. The reason it's priority for me is the safety issues have become incredibly relevant for the past couple of weeks when we've seen plane crashes that would have been through Santa Monica Airport that would have devastated our neighborhood. But tonight we're talking about air pollution. So I think the solution that we're working on right now, immediately funding the study, makes absolutely perfect sense. I'm an analyst by profession. I like data. It's enough for me to say that I look at my car early in the morning and I see that there's black particulate on the car. I know that's not good for us, but we need a concrete study that supports, the UCLA study that supports the bill that Assemblyman Lou put out so we can actually speak with specific numbers on this.
Great, thank you. Our next speaker will be Susan Hartley.
Could I ask you the question?
Yeah. A lot of things. Basically, if you're elected and you make air pollution a priority issue.
Okay, I have it, just thanks. Thanks, Mike. Absolutely. And again, thank you to everyone for being here. I've been vice chair of the Airport Commission, I've served on the Commission four years. I'm on the Friends of Sunset Park Airport Committee. I'm on that because I live across from Fire Station Five. I live like less than half a block away from where the jets take off at the airport. I smell the fumes, I hear the noise, I tremble when I look at all the Gulfstream fours taking off. I voted on the Airport Commission and recommended that the Santa Monica City Council actively support Ted Lou's bills. And much to my chagrin, they did not support the first one because it might cost them some money. Well, there are a lot of people's healths at stake who live around that airport, not only Santa Monica residents but Los Angeles residents. And I thought it was preposterous that they'd want to spend money to find out what the hell we're breathing. Because you smell the fumes, as he said, you see the soot, it's all over everything. I've had two animals die of cancer, other animals have died of cancer in the neighborhood. I'm a cancer survivor and I would like to know what we're breathing. And I think Santa Monica should be willing to spend whatever it costs to do the health risk studies so that we can know exactly what we're inhaling 24/7. And LA has it much worse than we do. You can almost cut it, it's so palpable on Bundy sometimes, the exhaust.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Ted Winter.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you all here this evening. If I were to, absolutely would make a priority, a priority of Santa Monica City Council addressing the health concerns of the residents who live near the airport, who live in Santa Monica and those who live in adjacent communities outside our city borders. I'm particularly concerned about this issue because my father has two small children. We've seen a lot of studies already about how traffic congestion emissions, traffic congestion emissions from freeways in particular, studies that show that children who live near freeways have a lot of problems with asthma, a greater preponderance than the rest of the population. And we need to look after our children and of course, the rest of our residents, their health is a primary concern and should be of city government. I think what we need to do is start getting data and we need real data. We don't need studies where there's questions about where the location of the monitors are, whether or not the wind impacts, how much data is collected, whether the time of day is an issue we need. A study that everybody in this room can field is going to be producing genuine results. And we need to use that data to challenge the FAA about some of the flight operations we have and try to restrict the number of jets coming in and out of Santa Monica Airport in long-term, try to get rid of those jets. And that would be the short-term approach. And then of course, in 2015, we have the opportunity to change the nature of the airport operations, either to seize them altogether or to at least downsize them to the bare minimum everywhere that is nearby. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Linda Piara Abila.
Hi, is this on? Is it working? Yes. Okay, thanks, hi. Yes, I will commit to reducing air pollution at Santa Monica Airport. Short-term strategies, I would continue to seek legislative and legal means to ban Class C and D jets, reintroduce Assemblymember Ted Lou's bill, AB 700, monitor ground jet operations and conduct the monitoring study. Also, would like to reinstate efforts to disengage from the LAX flight patterns so that the jets, when they are there, this is short-term, so the jets don't have to idle. Right now, there's a policy that they have to wait for clearance from LAX because the flight paths are within three miles of each other. So there was, there were efforts to change that. I'd like to see that continue so that the jets don't have to idle. I would like to explore the idea of, since Santa Monica is, has proprietary authority over the airport and reserves the right to regulate the operations, the ground operations, I would like to dispense ideas about increasing landing fees for C and D jets. And then with that money, they could, that could be used for mitigating air pollution effects. For instance, going to long-term plans to plant some really dense cedar trees on the east end and the west end of the airport, which would serve as a carbon sink for the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next candidate is Richard Bloom.
Hi, everybody. As you probably know, I've been on city council for approximately nine years now. I moved to Sunset Park and live adjacent to the airport on Cloverfield. Moved there in 1981. I became a member of Friends of Sunset Park when the group formed and ultimately became its president for a few years before I ran for office. As a member, a board member and as the president of Friends of Sunset Park, the airport has always been one of our priority issues. I've walked the neighborhoods adjacent, I've seen the residue from jet aircraft, I've smelled it, I understand the issue very carefully. And when I ran for office and in every election subsequent to the first election, I made the airport a priority issue. I think what's really important about, in terms of our thinking about airport issues is that it's not just one battle. This is a war that we're fighting. It's a series of battles and skirmishes and we have to be strategic and careful about every one of them because our opponents, those who are on the other side of the issues that we care about, are well-funded, there are extremely powerful interests, including the FAA. But we don't shy away from doing battle when the battle is the right thing to engage in and that's why we're fighting the FAA right now on the runway safety areas.
Thank you very much. Our next candidate is Herbert Silverstein.
Good evening. Thank you all for coming. And of course, I will fight fervently to reduce the pollution in Santa Monica Airport and the surroundings. As an asthmatic, I'm fully aware of what can happen when the air becomes heavy and full of dust. I've gone through this and I don't want to go through it again, I don't wish it on anyone else. But jet aircraft, I believe, should be banned from Santa Monica Airport completely. You need to step in the right direction. You close the airport at night. Let the propeller planes come in and land and take off, but send the jets somewhere else.
You've got it.
Why should we be the ones to have all the pollution? You know what the problem is? Solve it, fast and quickly.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Jerry Rubin.
Thank you very, very much. Mayor Mike Feinstein, I want to thank Concerned Residents Against Airport Pollution. Of course, if I was elected to the council, this would be a number one priority. The pollution issue has to be considered the same as a safety issue. Health issues and safety issues should go hand in hand. I have to be pretty frank, I remember two years ago when Ted Lou's bill was introduced. The council members here today put out a letter opposing it even before the council had a chance to debate it. I remember when Mayor Bob Halbrook did that. I know he's here in the audience today, but I have to be frank about it. It was an unfair process. Even Mark Gold, the head of the Environmental Task Force, agrees that unfunded mandates can be very positive. If it wasn't a reason to lobby against this bill and kill it, we could have been on our way to having comprehensive studies already. And I do hope, as we move forward in the future, that that can change, especially since you're Assemblyman Lou and Bill Rosendahl and Congresswoman Harmon fervently wanting Santa Monica and LA to come together. We need more leadership from Santa Monica.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Jonathan Mann.
The last time I appeared before this year, I think I was the only one that spoke out and closed down the airport. I don't want to just stop the jets, I'm going to stop every plane and I'm going to turn that airport into a park with a hidden path for emergencies. I think everybody here pretty much agrees that they're, they're, want to make priorities for pollution and aircraft noise, even Bobby Shriver, who isn't here. The last time he was here, I told him that if they didn't close the airport down by 2015, I might have to get in front of a brother involved in planning. I still may have to do that. Anyway, I don't really think that sufficient consideration has been given to the idea of closing down the airport because people don't think it's realistic, but it comes up in 2015. I was a member of the Flight Attendant Union for nineteen seventy-five and my old president, Pat Friend, isn't speaking to me because she found out I wanted to close the airport down. But that's more important to me. And being in the airlines since nineteen sixty, seventy-five, on and off, I have a lot of reasons why I recognize the danger of aircrafts. I remember when there was an airport airplane crash on Fourth Street just past Pico.
And they can close down the airport. Our next candidate is Herb Katz.
Good evening. I've been on the council now for two eight-year terms. I've been involved in Sunset Park, I live in Sunset Park, I was on SPAN, which was the neighborhood organization before Friends of, I was president of it before I went to council. I was also involved in trying to close the airport way back before it was even close to popular. And there was a lawsuit taken, which I was not a part of, but I was on the board. I would support this. I will support doing everything we can to get a pollution study. Although I think, if we want to do it right, let's get some organization like AQMD to do it, a government organization, where we can get the independent look at it and cost. And the cost is going to be what is going to partially determine this. We're going to have to look at it that way. But I would support it, I will support it, I have supported, I'm one of the council members who went back to Washington to, excuse me, lobby our congresspeople against the C and D airports, airplanes. And I think we've done some success and we are fighting the FAA right now. And it may go to a lawsuit, but we're doing a big job of stopping those C and Ds which we have and we will continue to do so. I think it's important we look at this airport and in 2015, let's look at what else we can do with the airport. And a lot of that has got to be looked at, what we can do that the FAA will allow us to do. So all of these things have to come into play, but you've got my support, always have had my support, and I will continue to support it.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Ken Genzer.
I'm Ken Genzer. Being at the end of the row, I guess I can kind of work comments in about other people's answers than mine too. Just a couple of things. The city did try to ban jets before I was on the council. Legal settlement ensued that we cannot ban jets, jets at least until the year 2015. I personally believe it is very realistic to close the airport in 2015. And regarding Ted Lou's bill, a letter did come out from the city before the council discussed it. I understand why that happened because of the timing involved, it all happened very quickly. It didn't reflect my personal points of view and when it got to the council, I got the city's position modified so that we would actually support it with some cap. Because it was happening very fast, we didn't want to have a blank check, but have some cap on the amount of money we would spend to fund the study. The question is about short-term and long-term. I think in short-term, in the very short-term, we have to proceed on the track we've been on. And I'm saying this in the context of, I don't have any doubt that this is a serious problem. It is the same as safety. Whether you get hurt by breathing or you get hurt by a plane crashing into you, you're hurt. And I don't, I'm not drawing that distinction. But I think in the short-term, there's currently a report going on in multiple airports. We need to build off of each of these reports because ultimately, we won't have the authority on our own. I'll go into more detail perhaps in other questions because Marty's probably got his sign. But we need to build coalitions, we cannot do this alone. We want good science and I'm committed to working for that. It's not an issue of money for me.
Thank you. Great. Do you support Los Angeles representation on the Santa Monica Airport Commission? Do you believe it would be helpful to finding regional solutions, the pollution, noise, the safety issues?
I don't think this would make a significant difference. I don't support it, it's not in our city charter. Take a vote with people of Santa Monica to happen. I'll give the same answer, and I only mean it semi-sarcasmically, that I gave to John Fuhrer, the representative, when he was a city council member, addressing with, addressing the city council, which is, I'll support that when LA allows a Santa Monica resident to be on LA's planning commission. Because I believe LA's planning commission has at least as much effect on Santa Monica as our airport commission has on the people of West LA. I do think though, that we have to recognize this is a regional issue. Coincidentally, I support it strongly and successfully so. Appointing a just move from West LA to Santa Monica resident will be our latest appointment on the commission. I know he's going to be a terrific addition.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Herb Katz.
Well, I agree with Ken and I do know that it takes a lot more than just appointing someone. I would be happy if they put us on their airport commission, LA, before we do that, support them on ours. But I think it's much more complex than that and we can handle it. It is regional, but we look at it regionally, we know it's regional. We're not going to do an air pollution study just in Santa Monica, we're going to cover it and see what goes on in LA. So I think that answers the question. No, I would not support a resident from LA on our commission.
Our next candidate is Jonathan Mann.
I would not only welcome them, I would welcome the entire West Side, anybody that's affected by the air traffic that emanates from our city. The more support that we can get for people who oppose the airport and want to close it down, the better as far as I'm concerned. I'm dead serious about it. I just, I lived on Oak Street and Twenty Third, after that I lived on Twenty First and Hill Street. And I know how bad it is for the people that are really close to the airport. The more support we can get from outside that area, from the near neighborhoods, the better. So we have to stand up to the FAA. They've been pushing us around for years. And they think it's airport, but it's not. And it doesn't belong to the businesses. Very few people who live here in Santa Monica use that airport. So it needs to be closed down. It doesn't serve our interests, it doesn't make any meaning for the city at all. It breaks even.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Jerry Rubin.
Thank you. I think it would be a good thing. I think if you spoke with our city attorney, I don't think she would say there was a legal prohibition to doing that. I think it should be looked into. I think we benefit everyone because of the unique proximity with the LA area and Santa Monica. I think even if it's an advisory or vote on the commission, it would be good. Some sort of liaison, some official liaison position or some official non-advisory position, even a voting member might be relevant. And I think it's worth looking into. I don't think there's a legal prohibition. And just because they are not, as of yet, inviting Santa Monica people to be on their commissions, there's no reason for us to not take the leadership to do what will make the issues more effective, to achieve the results in a regional way.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Herbert Silverstein.
I would support Los Angeles being on the commission as well. I believe that would be a smart move and that they can interact with us, have to point out the problems that they have in LA and here, perhaps a solution can be worked out. And I'd also welcome interaction from Long Beach, Orange County, and Burbank. I'm sure that all these airports have the same problems and by working together, we can find a solution.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Richard Bloom.
Thank you. Well, it's not something that I could support. It is written into our city charter and the city attorney has weighed in on this and it's simply not possible. But for me, I think there's a more important principle here. The fundamental jurisdiction over issues of the airport resides in two places. One is the FAA where there's little or no accountability and the other place is the city of Santa Monica. The Airport Commission is the link through the city council. The Airport Commission and the city council are the place where our city, who has jurisdiction, shows its accountability. We on the city council ultimately have to be accountable to everyone, including residents in Los Angeles because of the impact we have. Because of that accountability issue, I think it makes even more sense that the Airport Commission only be made up of Santa Monica residents. I understand that there are large issues of frustration in both communities. Certainly, Santa Monica residents are as frustrated as those in LA and we need to be accountable to those issues.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Linda Piara Abila.
Well, excuse me. As we've seen, the airport pollution issues are a regional problem and so many other challenges that we face in Santa Monica are regional problems. Actually, I would support having a resident from LA serve on the Santa Monica Airport Commission and here's why. Seventy percent of the pollution from the airport goes into LA, community from Mar Vista and West LA. And so I understand that the far eastern portion of Santa Monica Airport actually is in Los An, is within the boundaries of Los Angeles City. And I, as I recall, LA City also did see a certain amount of land for acquisition by Santa Monica to complete the airport. So there is some history for this. The, as you've seen, councilmember Rosendahl, Assemblymember Lou have been very proactive in working to enact solutions and their jurisdictions are LA. The new commissioner could be headed by Bill Rosendahl's office and we would have to change the Santa Monica Municipal Code to do it.
Our next candidate is Ted Winter.
They're making some short-term legal obstacles to putting representation as a full commissioner on our airport commission, but certainly, very quickly, we could have some sort of liaison from the adjoining Los Angeles communities on that commission. And I think a dialogue on these issues and input from our neighbors is important. On the Recreation Parks Commission here in Santa Monica, recall, we had a dust-up about a year ago about the use of the dog park airport, where people from Mar Vista were not allowed to use it. And we found it, we got everybody in a room and found out what the issues were, which we shouldn't have done in advance instead of creating a law against our neighbors not using that dog park. We solved that issue, the commission recommended the council that they open it up to people from Mar Vista and outside Santa Monica and that worked out famously. And I think in any of these issues that we share with the adjoining communities where there's traffic, homelessness, our planning and land use, the more people we get from communities all around this area, the more we can talk about these issues, the more we can work towards solving the problems we all share.
Our next candidate is Susan Hartley.
Well, the incumbents are correct that the city charter would preclude non-Santa Monica residents from being on the commission. However, it seems that as Linda pointed out, and she's right on, the east end of the airport is Los Angeles. They reconfigured Sentinel and Bundy and brought in LA land. I think that there could be some creative solutions so that an area so adversely affected by the airport, Mar Vista and West Los Angeles, would be able to have some sort of liaison or some sort of representation on the commission. I would like to see LA County and LA City join in with Santa Monica on the litigation, the existing litigation. In the past, there have been task force where residents of LA and Santa Monica join together. I want to urge everybody here to attend the airport commissions. We never get an attendance like this. And that's where we hear all the input from the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last candidate in this round is Michael Kovak.
As number nine, I can say I agree. Like all of our issues around homelessness, water pollution, this issue is not restricted to Santa Monica. We need to, we need our leadership to work with more Vista than us in LA, communities that are also affected by airport pollution. My campaign is based on providing Santa Monica with what Santa Monica wants. And for my door-to-door canvassing, I can tell you that Santa Monica wants jets gone and they want the airport closed in 2015. It's actually very simple, you don't hear a lot of people fighting that concept. It's essentially we work together to solve this issue and it's something we can solve.
Our next question is a 60-second answer. We're also going to start on that end. And it is something that actually many have already touched on, Santa Monica fully funded a data collection of jet aircraft ground operations in order to determine the amount and extent of air pollution for use in a comprehensive health risk assessment. If you already answered this in the first question and you want to talk about other shorter, long-term strategies, or even if you have a specific plan on how to close the airport in 2015, great. If you haven't addressed this yet, please do so in this answer.
Ideally, we need, ideally we need to find a way to make airport users pay this fee. Because really, it's because of them that we have to do the study, but we do need to do the study. And you know, professionally as an analyst, we look at numbers. We want to understand what are the specific things, we have a concrete method of going to approach legislative issues. I don't think there's a way to do it without a really good comprehensive study.
Our next candidate is Susan Hartley.
I really applaud Ted Lou and Marty Rubin for pushing this issue. My feeling was that the city did not want to pursue this because they would be put on notice of the toxicity of the fumes and that would affect them down the road, say there's a class action against the city of Santa Monica because of them not curtailing the fumes at the airport. I would like to see this comprehensive health risk assessment done. And it drives me up the wall quite frankly when they say, oh, but we don't, it's going to, it's not going to be good science. Think about all the discoveries over the ages, all the scientific discoveries. There was a hell of a lot of bad science before they got to the good science. And bad science means that theory didn't work out the way the scientists thought it was going to. So then they chose Plan B and Plan C and Plan D and however many plans down the road, they came up with a solution. And that's, we need to collect the data, then they can do the modeling studies. And if the first modeling study doesn't come up with something conclusive, they go on to the second one. But we need the data.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Ted Winter.
Well, I'm a big believer that when it's possible, you make the voter pay. So as Michael and others have suggested, if there's a way to put a surcharge on takeoff and landing fees at the airport to fund data collection of air pollution from aircraft, I'd be in favor of that. If that's not possible, I'd really first seek ways to call together money vaults from Santa Monica and the adjoining communities. But if that's not possible, then I wholly believe Santa Monica owes it to its residents, particularly those who live in the Sunset Park area and are concerned about these emissions to fund a collection of complete and federal set data about airport emissions.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Linda Piara Abila.
Yes, I too would support funding the data collection for airport pollution studies that the state and federal agencies won't. There was a study in 1999 and another in 2007. Be good to do a real comprehensive one. Be good to do a real comprehensive one, like Francis from the California Air Quality Management District. And this data, then, as I see it, would go on to support legislative and legal efforts to ban the jets that are the main cause of the pollution. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Richard Blume.
So those who are suggesting that we need to have a funding source are suggesting that it's something that is very irresponsible, in fact. It is always a good idea for us to have a funding source for something new that we're, that we're going to be paying for. We really don't know what the cost of this study is going to be, and it's pretty irresponsible, I think, for any city council member, for simply saying, we'll write a blank check. We really, as a practical matter, can't do that, but we've shown that we're willing to put up big bucks in the appropriate and the right strategic setting, as we are doing right now in our current ongoing battle with the FAA. That is costing us hundreds of thousands of dollars at the present time, and we really don't know how far that battle's going to take us. So the answer is, I believe we do have to have good science, that we're going to fight this battle, and we're going to do it successfully. We cannot, we don't get too many traps with this. We've got to do it right at the outset. That means that we have to follow through on the AQMD study, get good science, and do it the right way.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Herbert Silverstein.
If Santa Monica would like the prestige of its own airport, then it should fully fund the data collection to determine the amount of air pollution. Let's face it, these are not these huge commercial jets. These are transient traffic of corporate jets. And the data collection could determine how well these aircraft are maintained in order to have lower emissions. Whether this is at all possible, it'll only be found if we have the data collection.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Jerry Rubin.
Well, certainly, we need to fund the studies, and we can't just talk about limping at inadequate sum. It's not fair to be debating the money. You want to find out what the most comprehensive studies are going to be, the ones that are going to delineate the airport pollution, not just freeway pollution mixed in or try to blame all the problems that way. You saw the letter in the LA Times about the studies they did at the LA airport, and you get adrift of what I'm talking about. We need to be saving money on all the consultants we pay. They got free consultants, Susan Hartley and others on the airport commission. They'd be willing to help to set up a system that'll be scientifically adequate, and you've got to put up the bucks. We got money in Santa Monica. Are we going to protect the people's health? Are we willing to put up the money? That's the question.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Jonathan Mann.
There's a famous quotation that's been attributed falsely to Samuel Clemens. He says there's three kinds of lies, lies, damned lies, and statistics. It's okay to make studies, and more studies, and study, but what we have to do is we have to close down the airport. One of the things was suggested that we charge fees for these studies for the users of the airport. That's a good idea. I also think that the airport, which charges some of the highest fees in the world to use this airport, needs to have their budget audited, because there's a lot of money coming into that airport, and there's no profit being made at all. Correct me if I'm wrong. So the other thing that I think we need to do, because I don't believe our city council has the guts to stand up to the FAA, is we need to have a referendum in this city. We need to do the same thing we did with RIFT. When the locals here are fed up with traffic on the streets, they have an amendment. We can do the same thing.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Herb Katz.
Well, I, first of all, I think the user should be paying the greater portion of this. But again, I think Richard Blume said it, we need to know how much the money is. How much are we talking about? Now we've got to figure where we can get it. We all know what the situation in the country is right now, which means our budget is affected, too. We don't just have the money. But we can commit to it. I will certainly commit to it to a point when I know the cost of it and know that we can get this done, to get it done properly. And I still think, using the AQMD study, using the assessing user, and we can get it done and get it done properly. As far as standing up to the FAA, this city has stood up to the FAA to the point of hundreds of thousands of dollars, potential lawsuits on the C and D airplanes, and I was, I went back to Washington on it. Thank you.
Our last candidate on this round is going to be Ken Genzer, and just before Ken answers that, I just want to let everybody know that we're going to pass around index cards. Please write down questions that you have. If you want to put your name on it as well, great. If not, that's fine, too. So this fine lady in the back is going to bring by the cards. Ken, please.
Well, at the risk of being confused with Sarah Palin, I don't think this is the right question.
And you're not going to answer it?
No, because I think the real question is, what data are we going to collect? And I think that's the hard part here. So I was trying to say before, there's currently a study going on by the South Coast Air Quality Management District. We need to build on that. We are, as a city, augmenting that data already with collection of data on our ground operations. We develop that in conjunction with the, with them. There's another study going on in terms of apportionment, kind of issue Jerry talked about, where are the various pollution sources coming from? Once that study gets started, and that's going to be getting started soon, we can work with them to build, determine what data we need to get. Only when we know what we're going after in terms of information can we design the study and then determine how much it's going to cost. I certainly support funding it. If it's a huge amount of money, we might look to grants or regional things, but we've got to get it done. But first, we've got to know what we're going after.
Thank you. Our final question of the first four that we gave out, we're going to start on the right side there, as Ken, or if that feels right, your left. And this is a 30-second answer. Do you support holding a town hall forum on the future of Santa Monica Airport? Is that a lie? If not, why?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's time for us to start focusing on that. We talked about doing that about a year or so ago at the council, and it's never quite happened, and I know that another issue's going on. But 2015 is coming towards us. We have options then. My personal position is that we cannot make the neighbor, the airport, a good neighbor, and it doesn't look that the FAA is going to let us, or it's certainly not going to let us do it easily, then we have to seriously look at closing.
Our next candidate is Herb Katz.
I think the answer to the question is not a town hall meeting. We're going to need several, and we should have them regularly so that we keep getting input and we keep getting it updated. I think it's highly important we do this and do it regularly, and this would include not only Santa Monica but LA, so it becomes a regional issue. And I think we need to do it quickly and let the FAA know how we feel about them, and we have to close that airport in 2015. So be it. I'm with it.
Our next candidate is Jonathan Mann.
Well, this is a perfect question to ask, and I'm very pleased to answer it. I would like to go into a lot more detail than I have time for. I agree we need to have town hall forums, plenty of them, and I think I have a way to get people to participate, and they come to in flesh, by holding electronic town halls on the city website. And I've been fighting for this since the late eighties. We had it for a short while with the Public Elect Product Network, and then the plug was pulled on it, and it's an excellent way for people to attend and participate and have an input into the city's policies.
Thank you.
From their home.
Our next candidate is Jerry Rubin.
Well, I'm not prepared to rule out the closing of the airport, but as a council member, I want to get input from the public before I make such a major decision. I called for this, and I know Concerned Residents Against Airport Pollution called for it years ago. We need to have it at least early next year, and I agree with Mayor Katz, it should be a couple, and it should include people of Bill Rosendahl's district and everything. In fact, the city should gladly work with Concerned Residents Against Airport Pollution and Francis Sunset Park and other neighborhood groups to co-sponsor it as soon as possible.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Herbert Silverstein.
We should definitely announce public forums on this and many other disputed ideas. The future of Santa Monica Airport, of course, and as we discussed tonight, is entirely important, but the public must have a voice in anything that is done. Again, put it to a vote, put it on a referendum, but the city must listen to the public.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Richard Blume.
We need a very carefully thought-out process, and I've been working with the city manager on that for a couple of years now. It was after I brought the issue up in a council meeting during our budget study sessions that the city manager decided to take the airport under his personal jurisdiction. But we need to be very, very careful about the way we do this. We need multiple community meetings, both, as I said in the beginning, we need to be strategic. We cannot afford to make the mistakes that led to the 1984 disaster for Santa Monica. We need to be conscientious and careful.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Linda Piara Avila.
Yes, I would support not only one town hall meeting, but numerous ones throughout all the different neighborhoods in Santa Monica, and then have city staff synthesize the salient points from each forum and collate that into a final report. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Ted Winther.
I think a town hall, at least one, if not many, on the future of the airport is critical. I think we're all in agreement on that. I think when I talk to people out there, they're disappointed that the airport was not included in the loose plate for the future, and they'd like to have some answers about that. They're disappointed, people who live near the airport, that there's a fire storage station being built there in their backyard, and there's no chance of public review. I think they're disappointed that there's hotlines you can call to complain about airport operations, and nothing ever gets done. So I think we need to have an open, honest dialogue about all these issues, not just the future of the airport.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Susan Hartley.
We do need a town hall forum, and as people have said, probably more than one. At the airport commission, we've had people from Santa Monica Sunset Park, Ocean Park, West LA, Mar Vista, Venice, Rancho Park, and Beverly Hills complain about the effects of our airport. Our airport is Santa Monica's dirty little secret. It's a love canal in our midst. I'm appalled that we haven't put up the bucks to have the studies done. It's irresponsible, when people's lives are at stake, as they are every day at that airport, to not be doing these studies.
Thank you. Our final candidate this round is Michael Kovacs.
Historically, we've been a very progressive city, and we've got to find a way to solve this problem, because it's a very real problem. The more smart people we have in the room, the better solutions we're going to find. As my virtual town hall meeting, my campaign website, whatsantamonica1s.com, explains, I'm basing my efforts on what the voters' interests are. A town hall forum is a great way to learn what Santa Monica wants.